All right, we'll be calling the meeting today. Um, zoning Board of Appeals, October fifteenth, seven oh three P M. We can have a roll call of the members.
Member Olson?
Present.
Member Maggio?
Present.
Member Cadillis?
Present.
Member Lopez Hernandez?
Present.
Member Crowitz, absent. Member Macy, absent. And member Makua, absent.
Um, before starting with the continued cases and then the new cases, as you can see, we have four members today at the board. That means that in order for a determination to happen, if it's for approval of the petition, it would have to be unanimous. So, once we read through the cases, um, we are open to hearing a petition to have a continuance, so that there's a full member that can be voted on the petition, and we can take that into consideration. Um, so what we're gonna do is just open up the case one by one, and if you'd like to have the meeting continued, we can consider that and move forward from there.
Okay, that sounds good.
Alright, um, so let's start with seventy-seven Alley Streets.
You guys understand that, right? You have to get full votes, yes?
We have to get full votes, and don't they all have to be people that sat on the, when we came last?
Right, so, there's only two there again.
Yeah. So it's impossible.
Right.
Moving, moving.
It's a good job that stuff's doing.
We're gonna move on.
Do I have a motion from the board?
No, a motion to continue?
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, for the next meeting?
Yeah.
It's, um, let me see, it's right here, November, November nineteenth.
Wow.
That's an election day, you can't have an election day.
Oh, you can't have an election day, no.
No, so that's right, it's November nineteenth.
Okay, who will, thank you.
Alright. We have a motion, and we have our, can we have a roll call on the continue?
Yep. Member Cadillis, please?
Motion to continue. If you're, if you're, yes.
Member Maggio?
Yes.
Continue. Member Olson?
Yes, to continue.
And member Lopez Hernandez?
Yes, to continue.
Present.
Thank you, have a great night, everybody.
Sorry about that.
Alright, we have the next case, seven-six-one Summer Streets.
Yeah, I'm saying, very good.
Did you get all the letters I sent to you?
Yeah, I have like, did you get them? I have them printed out, if you have them.
I am, well, yeah.
It's explaining. But, I think we're playing the machine because we did everything last, so. For those, you may, I don't know.
We might drink by town, this is, uh, we have the exception of the term by town.
I just wanna confirm that all four members of the president here were at the, the whole, I didn't remember, seven-six-one.
Yep.
No.
No, I was not.
No.
But I watched the recording.
This is being continued.
I know, but member Maggio, member Cadillis was already here, so you can't continue. You gotta continue.
I wasn't here for both meetings.
They weren't here for the last meeting.
I did watch the recording of the last meeting.
You did?
President, but that's still.
We, that's the, this is why you're lying case.
Let me look, I got it right, yeah.
Yeah. We get that, we're here in July, and then it got put all the way to, I think, September, and then September got put all the way down.
Yeah.
So.
So, member Maggio did not vote, and member Cadillis Peas was not here.
I was not here for the last one, but.
The July?
Yeah, July, I was.
Yeah.
July.
He did not vote, though.
No.
No.
September seventeenth.
September seventeenth, that was not here.
Right.
They were going for that.
So you don't have all the, right?
Nope. So that's continued? November seventeenth?
Yeah. Do I have a motion from the board to continue?
Yes.
Yep.
Motion to continue?
Second from Mr. Olson.
Yeah.
Again, for like, if you go back and watch the meeting, yes, you were allowed to participate if needed at the eleven-nineteenth meeting.
That's true.
But if you watched it, you wouldn't have allowed to participate, so, so who gets five, because then I qualify the vote, but next year.
Okay, thank you. Do we have a roll call on the continuing?
Member Cadillis Peas? Motion to continue. Member Maggio?
Yes, to continue.
Member Olson?
Yes, to continue.
Member Lopez Hernandez?
Yes, to continue.
Okay.
Um, we have new cases, fifteen Murphy Ave.
What about this one, which we'll draw first?
This is, uh, after this one.
Good evening, uh, Mr. Chairman, Tom Kelly, forty laws, three P B D Mass, preparing on behalf of, uh, Ben, and, uh, we would respectfully request that this matter be continued to your meeting of November nineteenth.
Sounds good, do we have a motion from the board?
Motion to continue.
Second. Member Peas, seconded.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much, we have a nice.
We have a roll call on the.
November seventeenth, I think that is. Um, member Peas, to continue?
Yes.
Member Maggio?
Yes, to continue.
Member Olson?
Yes, to continue.
And member Lopez Hernandez?
Yes, to continue. Alright, um, next we'll do Zero Circle Ave.
That's it, withdraw.
That's a withdrawal?
Yeah, I got the letter right there.
We have the letter.
I sent you down the. I wish you the luck. She had a whole letter.
Okay.
She moved her letter.
You moved the call?
First, we'll draw the petition.
What, yeah? Say what? There's only four people here. This is it, I'm working on that case.
Zero Circle Ave, we have a petition to, a notice of withdrawal without prejudice. Um, we have a few communications from councilors, as well as the Economic Development Industrial Corporation, E D I C. Um, in support of this, I will move to waive the reading of any of the communications and move forward with deliberating. Um, certain things from the board in relation to Zero Circle Ave.
Do a motion to allow withdrawal?
Without prejudice?
Without prejudice.
Okay, do you have a second from these? I will second that.
Thank you. Member Peas, to withdraw without prejudice?
Yes.
Member Maggio, um, withdraw without prejudice?
Yes, to withdraw without prejudice.
Member Olson, to withdraw without prejudice?
Yes, to withdraw without.
And member Lopez Hernandez, to withdraw without prejudice?
Yes, to withdraw without prejudice. Right. Next, we have eighty-five Perkins Streets.
Okay, I'm taking right tally, uh, let's just draw.
Can you wanna read the case first? Do you wanna read the case?
Uh, yes.
Yep.
Sorry.
Yeah, eighty-five Perkins Street, Russell, forty-two thirty-eight-ten, petitioner Thomas Kennedy as agent, for the owner eighty-five Perkins Street Lynn, by his attorney Sam Vitale, to permit pursuant to match federal law, chapter forty-eight, section six, a conversion of a pre-existing, non-conforming, single-family dwelling into a two-family dwelling, finding that such use is in the R-two general resident, residence district, not substantially more detrimental than the current use to match federal law, chapter forty-eight, section six, on a lot, with less than the required square footage, frontage, and lot coverage. A two-family dwelling requires twelve thousand square feet of land, property has five thousand square feet of land, fifty feet of frontage, where seventy-five feet is required, and lot coverage not in excess of thirty percent, where forty-two percent is proposed. As to law, chapter thirty, section six states, pre-existing non-conforming structures or uses may be extended or altered, provided that no such extension or alteration shall be permitted unless there was a finding by a permanent granting authority such that change, extension, or alteration shall not be substantially more detrimental than the existing, non-conforming use of the neighborhood.
Thank you.
This lot, it's somewhat unique, for many reasons. It, it's been before the board, it previously, uh, approved, uh, for the addition of bedrooms, and then it was, that decision was amended and approved again. The part of the unique that was sawed back down was put on the deputy coverage. The building was pre-existing non-conforming, that's why we originally respected whether it definitely was a neighborhood. With respect to that, I have a petition signed by all the neighbors who were by, and I'd like to see it again, uh, that they were aware of what was proposed, uh, once proposed, it made a, uh, two-minute dwell. And the building was pre-existing non-conforming, you've seen, you've seen that, uh, the traffic on the street, this would have required siding on the wrong side. This all began when the architect raised the question about the stairway that came down from the second floor, and what the fact that it ended in this, side gap, uh, was a violation. Remember Commissioner Donovan, he said, well, that wasn't a violation. Um, and I thought we were gonna be able to just go and do this, but once again, uh, the commissioner, sent a letter, saying that if we were to do what was proposed now, we would be increasing, uh, one-line conformity, and that one-line conformity would be the, uh, lot coverage, which in the present form is like thirty-six percent, and if we were to do this, it would be forty-two percent. So, so the narrowest length that we're looking for is making that, uh, change in, in lot coverage. Let me tell you what is more strange and unique about this lot, is that it's really not just five thousand square feet, it's ten thousand square feet, but in the craziest story I've ever seen, and this is because someone bought ten thousand square feet, two five thousand square foot lots, and it made progress because, uh, you have to see it to believe it. You'll see on this, that eighty-five Perkins is here, and eighty-five, which side are we seeing, in a diagonal? And the reason for that is when the city sold, I bought the lot, the census map, so you can see that essentially, each of the people who, uh, own two lots, and they have ten thousand square feet, they were configured this way because when the city sold the land, it said to be used for landscaping and shopping, and those were far away there. But then they added, you can't be combined with any other lot. And so, my people have a deed that says they own eighty-five Perkins, who is known as, uh, Lot A, but if you see what Lot A is, it's not directly to the rear. The people who were there in sort of areas, they own another five thousand square feet, something like that, that they own. So, we don't have a problem about landscaping or carpeting, it's just we can't count it as ten thousand square feet. Essentially, what they seem to do is, uh, to convert a one-family to a two-family, uh, send to the copy of the plans, and show those plans to all the neighbors, the neighbors had no objection, uh, and with respect to it, the real meat that we need is the lot coverage, and that's because, uh, any structure, whether it's attached to the mash, on the lot, counts for lot coverage. So, uh, you have the point that, uh, the architect did, uh, time is here, and, um, I believe that we were doing anything, as once I was told, it was clear what it was about. But then, on second thought, a letter from the building commission, who said that, uh, the variance that was granted, uh, in two thousand thirty-four, they had the depth and the garage of the rear. So the only other question that I then had was, uh, first the commission told me, I can do it in two spaces if I had a two-story garage, and I said, I may have a two-family in three spaces, so we did better answer. Essentially, the garage is going to have, uh, the ability to drive two and pop the car behind it, which, so it will be two in the garage and one behind the garage, so we room in three spaces. So, uh, when we're planning this out, we, this is the one I can tell you guys. When planning something, you get a, a lot of space, it's maybe one or two hundred meters out. You look, this would be practice, uh, here and there, so this is a sixteen-foot garage, so the eighty-foot garage, so, this is how it creates an asphalt, used by parking tractors already, so we need that, the proper, so we got that there, swap, as needed, so we had the reference of three spaces for it. But it's only the structure that's done, we have forty percent. And, uh, that's the definition. And so it's thirty percent in a, um, I don't know, not even a lot. We have no system, we do it in obvious thirty-six percent, based on prior variance, say, the previous board, I mean.
Alright, and before I know it, Mr. Olson was given to voice a question, just to confirm, you do not want to, you wish this case to be viewed by the four?
Yes, I thought, uh, well, we got the field that since we showed it to the neighbors, not a man in the chair.
Okay, on Mr. Olson, are you gonna voice a question?
Yeah, I just wanna see, does that plan show, designate that as a parking area?
Sure, maybe, yeah, maybe they are.
Do we have a plan that shows a block that is a parking, a parking area? I'm looking for a plan that shows that parking area had remained.
I'm sure if it's right now, this is a, 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 a asphalt, I have it.
Yeah, I just wanna designate it as a parking area, so they won't build on it in the future.
We have the parking plan? It's a one.
Thanks, the, from the attachments that we have here, I don't see any that has the label of the parking.
It was probably the drawings.
The drawing here are a little bit fuzzy. That's all. It's all the stuff, if you can, you can't really read.
They're just looking for something that calls out, they got two of their eyes in one of the back, and.
It's not.
Can we increase that on the email? Is that true?
Thanks.
Can we increase it on the email? It's a bit.
I have it here. But of course, that's a little.
Can you just, I need that. Trying.
Alright. Please, yes?
Yes, I will, I see the stairs and all that going around the building, those coming out? How do you get from Perkins Street to that parking area?
He's asking how you get there, you're asking them on back end.
Yeah.
So we're, so it's, it's, if I'm scared of the back?
Yeah.
It wraps this way, comes back down, and it's right here, then the, 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 on sidewalk. That's how, that's what we thought the issue was, that's, yeah, that's not an issue.
Yeah, so where, so how does the, how do they get to that parking area?
You then try to run the chip.
So I just wanna see it on the plan, that, that parking spot.
Okay, I can have a new, please, from all of this.
Yeah, one, this, you would basically, you would never walk together, they, to bear, and, uh.
Yeah, it's unclear, so I just wanna, there's two in the garage, you got one, two, and then the number three is in the back. So label it up that way, then there's no confusion.
What we cleared out is that, if you look at the prior variance, it says, you see the serious back end, it says that's a rock. But if you go and see, it's not, so that was one of the issues.
Yep.
It's, it's really, yeah.
Yep.
But the whole thing going down.
Okay. Any other?
On the one, you can use your.
Can you access the other lot, or do you have to go around to the, such?
Yeah, on there, I was ready, but they're starting to access. It's, yeah.
If the city put language in, it can have a deed here, okay, and that's so, it's a little, it's, it's no problem using landscaping or parking, it's just the way it was, uh, uh, worked. And the value was, seconded, it's a base stipulation that the land used for parking or landscaping on it, both of them were erected on the same land, so far so good, and the lot not being carried out in any other way. And then the planning board approved a plan between Lot A and Lot B.
Yeah, so what, what do you, what's the lot used for, and will be used for? It's just, is it?
A change can happen.
The lot, what are you doing on the lot right now?
Wish has not, well, she has a garden down there, and she just, she should have planned this, she has a garden down there.
Okay, yeah, okay.
Yeah, it's, it's also, uh, maybe, maybe it's a, it's a draw.
Right.
Great.
There's all, it's a, it's a, it's a, it's a difference.
Two lots.
Yeah.
Steps down.
Any other questions from the board? What's up? In here, um, we heard the petitioner, anybody here against the petition, would like to speak? Yes.
Can he come up and speak?
Yeah, can you? Sorry, can you come up to me? We need to, for the recording.
Absolutely.
Sort of, name.
This is not necessarily an objection, but just want some terrifying questions.
Can you close your eyes, sorry?
I'm a resident and joint owner of sixty-nine Perkins Street, down the street, and also am the owner of what will be considered the Lot B of Zero Wishart Terrace. Um, there are no plans shown for myself, or another, or a buddy neighbor at seventy-nine Perkins Street, so we are absolutely unaware of what is this plan here. Not that there's any. I'm sorry. Lot B's mine, okay, I understand that, but there's some plans for Lot A, and nothing's been divulged to myself, or even else. That is not understanding, so.
It's still available.
Okay.
Um, let's.
You need to, uh, give it back.
Is there anything else?
I guess the main concern is, um.
Do it at the second minute?
No.
How much?
Sixty-nine.
Okay, sixty-nine. I think so.
No, you're.
Because, we, we, as the city, we have a, listen, there goes.
Please help me allow you, I'm staying, so.
That's eighty-five.
Yes. I don't know.
Right.
But this is, this belongs to eighty-five Perkins.
No.
Oh, yes. I don't know, it's actually, it's forgotten.
Lot A is owned by, by these people, Lot B.
Uh, so, so it's, 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 so it's inverse for some reason, I, I, and, and the reason I'm telling you that is, is the, the, so there's also a lot falling down.
If you look at the whole map.
Here is a deed that says, a certain possible land, known as the name of Lot A.
That's simply not possible. It's not possible. Listen, we're getting this mapping correctly, Wishart Terrace is the paper route, that's not exist, okay? Um, there is a large rock, this gentleman here works at, lives at seventy-nine.
Yeah, I think he owns it.
No, I don't.
Well, I don't know, we got a deed.
Yeah.
Well, this is the Lot A.
Um, thank you, but I own Lot A with my wife, because it abuts my mother's property as well, so I had to operate and purchase Lot A.
Did you just get it on the seat?
No, I bought it, private sale from the, the owner of, of Perkins, uh, excuse me, seventy-nine Perkins.
Okay, I think I have the, these is what. You're fully defined, but I have these problems, I'm glad, I see, because there is so many.
In addition to this question of the parcel?
Sure.
Being, are there any other questions?
The actual, the, the concern is, um, not necessarily anything with the development itself, other than, you know, from hearing what's proposed here, it's not really a garage, but more or less a tunnel. Um, that being said, there is a parking problem with congestion on the street, alright? Naturally, there's been, uh, you know, efforts made to quell that a little bit with three lots, three parking spots in that said driveway, however, of course, people have parties, functions, gatherings at homes, um, work as tight as it is, my vehicle gets hit, I have to park on the street due to circumstances. Mr. Yat does as well at times, and I, I guess a request would be that a parking study be conducted, or some kind of study of thoroughfare down Perkins Street before anything else continues. I'm, I'm.
On-site parking, it's very, that's, this is required.
Oh, you understand, I understand that, but you don't, I, I do, I am cozy.
Are you cozy?
Yes.
Okay. It's a five thousand square foot lot, it says Wishart Terrace.
It's a zero, zero Wishart Terrace Lot A.
Was it nineteen, two thousand?
So I have not been informed of any of these plans whatsoever.
Did you got, notice from the C U N?
It's what's on here, but there's no, no drawings of, nothing.
It's not being built, it's nothing being built.
I understand, I also understand that it's been, there's been a survey conducted by Audian, Audian Wire, Sages Massachusetts, uh, that has been.
If you have a question about what's being built, the answer is, nothing is built on Lot A.
I understand.
And nothing is proposed to be built on Lot A.
It's not, just, let's quit it.
Lot B?
Lot B.
This isn't, that's why the proposal was to build on the five thousand square foot lot at eighty-five Perkins.
So, are you sure where the lot is?
Eighty-five Perkins.
No, I don't know, where is it, where is the, where is the, this one here?
Yeah.
I got one question, so, so intently, if it was shared, you, you have no knowledge of this other than something just showed up in the mail saying, yes, I mean, so here.
We, that's because you're the, but, we got signatures, and the people that, but, the, 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 the.
Did you?
Can I have this?
Sure. Sixty-nine.
And what's his?
Yeah.
So his name's?
Uh, it's not, yeah.
Can you spell that?
I have D and A, no, what, uh, N A, after the D, it's N A, and it's Y A T H last name.
Yeah, I'm waiting to look.
Seventy-nine Perkins Street.
Thank you.
And next door.
Thank you.
And yours is sixty-nine?
Correct, and, and zero Wishart Lot. Those are my concerns, there.
Yeah, um, do you also wish to speak?
Yeah, I'm just, um, so the thing is.
If you can.
I gotta aim and do. It is about the parking spaces, it is very crowded, it's a side street, it's smooth, it's uphill, and, um, so walkway come out all the way to the curb, right? But she parked in the street, she claiming that's as parking space as the street too, and I'm just wondering, why will you park there, I can't park there, you know what I'm saying?
We're gonna have three onsite parking spaces, which is required by the zoning.
Well, right now she could park like, at least six cars in that spot, or four cars, but she doesn't do it. She doing it, tattered as meat, like, I don't, I don't know why.
I don't know.
Yeah, I just.
All I can say is this, I don't know how many onsite spaces.
And I did not sign no.
But this lot will have three onsite spaces, the two guy in the rear, and one at the rear, and that's what's required, three.
Okay. Alright. In addition to the parking concerns, any other concerns or any other comments?
Uh, no.
Okay, thank you, thank you.
And that lot could be used to back, the doors are there.
Okay. There any wish from the board, any final comments before making moves of some kind?
I, I just wanna see a certified parking plan that shows the three spots.
Is this, and, are you positioning this as a stipulation?
Yeah.
Um, do we have a motion for the board then, in relation to this?
Motion to grant a stipulation.
Member Olson, motion to grant with the stipulation. Member Olson, motion to grant with the stipulation of having the certified parking plan?
Can I ask some more questions?
Yep.
Are we able to park on the southern lot that we're using as a garden?
Able, in the sense of legally, are you able to, physically?
Both.
Well, physically, Wishart's not really a, but maybe we can, right, I reckon what the city deeds said, it said, no building on the park, parking, landscaping, yes.
Okay.
It's, it's when they added that phrase, that's hard to be convinced. And what happens, somebody bought ten thousand square feet, one of the, that it divided into Halo and Deep, and then apparently sold them, that they were people. But they certainly have, they bought after readings, got five thousand square feet that they can park on. All three, most of them, they can't.
Does that clarify? I also have another question, Trina Vitale, before, considering the motion, it was mentioned that the other lot, not the one in question, the use of it was gonna be some passive use that is not intended to be developed in the future.
It says no building.
No building on the lots, and that is a stipulation from the previous zoning board of appeals, or is that in order?
Yes, that's from the city where they sold the land.
So that's already.
That's a breach.
Okay, so that's already.
It gets carried away.
Okay. All right, I have no other questions, so we can move forward.
Give me a second.
Any second on Mr. Olson's motion to grant with the stipulation of having a certified parking plan? All right, I will second that.
Thanks.
We can have a roll call.
Um, member Paez, to grant with the stipulation of a certified parking plan, presents it to the board.
Grant, please.
Member Maggio, with the stipulation, to grant with the certified parking plan.
Yes, to grant with stipulation, please.
Member Olson, to grant with the stipulation of a certified parking plan.
Yes, with stipulation of parking plan.
Member Lopez Hernandez, to grant with the certified parking plan.
Yes, to grant with the stipulation, certified parking plan. All right. Yes, eighty-five.
Can you do the, um, let's draw.
We'll now move to seventy-two Fayette Street, Mr. Olson, if you can breathe, and then we'll get, get, come on forward with the withdrawal of the petition.
Yes, how would you be there?
Seventeen Fayette Street, Len Mass, our, number.
As soon as, as soon as you can.
Ninety-five, five fourteen, zero zero nine, petitioner Flores, Makua, one three terrace Lynn, by his attorney Samuel Vitale. To permit pursuant to master law, chapter forty-eight, section six, conversion of pre-existing non-conforming, three-family dwelling, at such use as in the R two apartment house district, is not substantially more detrimental than the current.
That's a lot of things on the lot.
He's, he's, yeah, he's gonna.
With less than the required square footage and frontage, and less than the required parking spaces and buffer, an apartment house requires fifteen thousand square feet of land, lot has three thousand, three hundred and thirty, three thousand, three hundred and sixty-six square feet, land at forty-one point seven six feet of frontage, where fifty feet is required. Master law chapter thirty-six, section six, state, pre-existing non-conforming structures or uses may be extended or altered, provided no such extension or operation shall be permitted unless there's a finding by the permit granting authority, such change, extension, or operation shall not be substantially more detrimental than the existing non-conforming use to the neighborhood.
Thank you, Mr. Olson, and we got a communication from Mr. Vitale, a petition to withdraw without prejudice, do you have any other words, Mr. Vitale?
Just wanna move the letter in.
I can do the reading real quick, and dear Mr. Lopez Hernandez, request is made that the petition number one hundred eighty-two seventy-two Fayette Street be allowed to be withdrawn without prejudice, petitioner has advised that before undertaking to resolve the proper zoning classification of the property, that additional steps should be resolved, and so accordingly, at this time, the board is asking to permit the petition to be withdrawn without prejudice. Do we have a motion coming forward in relation to seventy-two Fayette Street?
So moved with, to withdraw without prejudice.
Second, but.
All right, we have a second, we have a roll.
Member Paez, to withdraw without prejudice?
Yes.
Member Maggio, to withdraw without prejudice?
Yes.
Member Olson, to withdraw without prejudice?
To withdraw without prejudice.
And member Lopez Hernandez, to withdraw without prejudice?
Yes, to withdraw without prejudice.
One left.
One left.
One left.
One three terrace?
Uh, one three square.
Okay.
One three terrace, yeah.
Mr. Olson.
Yeah, one three terrace, Massachusetts, parcel number ninety-three, five six eight. Petitioner Flores, Makua, and Sareth, one three terrace Lynn, by his attorney Samuel Vitale. To vary pursuant to master laws, chapter thirty, section ten, the provisions of the city of Lynn's zone ordinance to allow conversions of a pre-existing, non-conforming, two-family house in the house of one, single-family residence district into a three-family home with two thousand five hundred twenty-two square feet of land, where fifteen thousand feet is required, and forty-five feet of frontage, where fifty feet is required, with less than the required right side setback and onsite parking within the five-foot buffer area. Three-family dwelling into a four-family dwelling in the half of apartment house district, unless there are required square footage and frontage, the apartment house requires fifteen thousand square feet of land, lot has two thousand, three hundred and sixty-six square feet of land, and forty-one point seven six of frontage, where fifty feet is required. The lot also does not possess required parking spaces or buffer. Variance request requires the zoning board appeals to specifically find that all the circumstances relating to soil condition, shape, or topography such land of structures, and especially affecting such land of structures, but not affecting generally the zone and districts in which it is located, literal enforcement of the provisions of the audian ordinance, involves substantial hardship, financial or otherwise, to the petitioner, and that desire will may be greater without substantial detrimental to the good, and without relifying, substantially derogating from the intent or purpose of such ordinance.
Thank you, Mr. Olson.
This is owned by two individuals, one of whom is here, and she's suggesting that she would grab, wait till you had a report.
So, speaking of continuing, is that on the case?
Yes.
All right. Do we have a motion from the board in relation to one three terrace?
Motion to continue?
I'll second.
Launching in a second.
Member Paez, to continue?
Yes.
Member Maggio, to continue?
Yes, to continue.
Member Olson, to continue?
Yes, to continue.
Member Lopez Hernandez, continue?
Yes, to continue.
November seventeenth.
November seventeen.
Seventeenth. After the election.
It's November fifth is the election.
Yeah, that's right, okay.
Can't have it on election day.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Anything else?
Any motion to adjourn?
All right, do I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
All right, all in favor, aye.
Aye.